Let's rise and pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, board members and cabinet staff and citizens. Welcome. Before we take attendance, I just want to, as I do in each meeting, let you know that unscheduled audience participation is number 10 on our agenda. And if there's a desire by anyone to participate, there are some cards in the back corner next to the agendas. If you would fill that out and give that to Angela, and then we can handle that in an orderly way when that begins. Ms. Schaefer, would you take attendance?
President Dolly?
Here.
Vice President Delisandro?
Here.
Secretary Schaefer, here. Treasurer Bailey? Trustee Griffith?
Here.
Trustee Foster?
Here.
Trustee Hanser?
Present.
Very good. Any changes to the board agenda?
None.
Is somebody's microphone all the way up? It sounds pretty tinny out there. Just make sure. Okay, thank you. Now to our consent agenda, the minutes of February 26th. Yes, Dan?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there support? Eric's support. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Prearranged request to address the board, Oxford Gives Back.
Zoe?
Well, thank you for having us, Mr. Sir. My name is Emily McClear. I'm student leader of the project this year.
And I'm Caitlin.
Caitlin Data is another member of our planning committee. And I just wanted to share with you where we are in our planning and our movement of the project as of right now. And everything's going amazing. It's in about a month, so things are starting to pick up with community outreach. We're still looking for homeowners. We're still looking for sponsors. But as of right now, we have about 50 homeowners confirmed and about 50 volunteers who sadly have signed up. Our sponsors include Oxford Bank and Evergreen. We're working with them. We're working with Flex Concrete. There's a lot of community ambassadors are helping us go smoothly and be successful. We have fundraisers in motion right now. We're doing a bottle dry through March. And we have a publicity fundraiser tomorrow, actually. For community outreach, we're doing something a little bit different this year. We're going to our schools and hoping to bring the schools into bigger role this year. So I have reached out to all of the principals. And I've met with the staff from Leonard, Lakeville, and we have with Oh Yes and OPA. And I've met with Ms. Danielson from Bridges and Amy Dean, Professor Vicki from Greenlight. And that will all be happening within the next two weeks. And I think we've gotten a pretty good response from the staff there. And I'm confident that they will help us inspire the way to their school families to really bring the rest of the community into it.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
So I just want to make sure that, and I also state this publicly, that this year, unlike past years, on the day of Oxford Gives Back, you guys are doing your registration and sign-in and all of that over at DA, not at the high school, correct?
Correct. Mr. Boyd was gracious enough to let us use his building after some scheduling conflicts at the high school. Made it a little tricky for us to do here. But yes, we will be at the Oxford relevant at the high school full mornings.
Perfect. I have a question about your bottle drive.
Yes.
Timeframe. When is it starting and when is it ending?
It's starting right now, going through the rest of the month.
Okay.
And it's pretty flexible. More so if you have files and cans that you would have to donate, you can contact me at the contact information sheet that's going around. And then we're going through subdivisions and leaving bags and flyers as well.
Okay. Because I think our congregation wants to collect a bunch of them. I'm going to probably tell you where to take them. All right, good. Good. Thank you. Jason?
For the bottle drive, will there be a place to drop them off at?
We're going to do more pickup than dropping off.
Okay. Yes, sir.
So real proud of you, Mr. Sir. I love this program. So you said that you've got, so far you've got 50 homeowners. How many do you typically service?
Well, in past years, we've been around 70. It's a little bit smaller this year. I'm thinking that it will be around 60 as a final number.
Okay.
It's smaller because we've had a lot of homeowners that have moved or situations have changed. But we're hoping to build them back up in the next few years.
Okay, great. Yes?
And I don't need to know if this is a potential or possibility, but have we ever thought about like putting our own crossroads in the hat of getting help from them? This is an example. Like, I know that they have a library that, you know, exists. Like, the books exist and the room exists, but it's not put together. Like, there's tons and tons of books that have been donated that guy has got from different churches and different schools and all kinds. But there's no system for him. Like, there's, nobody's had the time to put a system like that together for him. I don't even know if he wants the help, but I don't know. I was just wondering if, um, do we, is that part of what Oxford Gives Back would do? Or no? Is it really just more residential?
We can tackle that as OSAC. We do independent studies and capstone projects. And we have a lot of students that we could make time available for them to tackle that. That would not be a problem. It actually might be some of your team members from Oxford Gives Back. They're doing this because they're good at this stuff.
Yeah.
So it's definitely something we could look at.
I just thought I would throw it out there. I just, you know, just curious.
Anything else? Yes?
So for people who might not be familiar with the program, could you tell us a little bit about what it is you're doing? What is Oxford Gives Back? What are you doing and why do you do it?
Well, Oxford Gives Back was started about four years ago by an OSAT student. She says, uh, and she wanted to service the elderly and other lives, unable community members with their yard work. Because that can be a burden for people who can't do it themselves and want to have the community help. And since then, it's grown into a much bigger project than when it first started. And we still tackle the yard work, but I think the message is bigger than that. It's really, the goal is to build relationships and make connections. And we do that through the yard work and through visiting with the homeowners. It's just much bigger than just yard work. And I think that that's important to know. When you think Oxford Gives Back, sometimes you can just say, oh, it's just very close. But it's more than that. It's about building relationships and making our community stronger together.
And I would agree. And I would thank you. Building community is a huge thing. And to see high school students drive that, it's been thrilling to watch. So thank you.
Great job. Thank you very much.
Board members on to number five. Board of Education Matters. In our last meeting, there was a moment where we started talking about Tim being on a biannual evaluation process. And we were wondering whether there needed to be a vote or not a vote. And he touched base with some people. And they thought that it should be on the records, that we had a motion and discussed it and put it into play. So to remind you, it's stated here, because he has had three consecutive evaluations as highly effective, we have the ability to, instead of every year, to do it every other. And so if somebody would like to at least create the motion, we can move on from there. Yes, please, Heather.
Move to approve a biannual evaluation of Superintendent Tim Throme based upon the fact that he has received highly effective on his last three consecutive annual evaluations.
Is there support? Chad, support? Discussion? Yes?
I still would like to make sure that we're touching base with Tim to make sure that his goals and objectives are being met throughout the year. I think it's important for two reasons. First, it's important for the board to make sure that it's clear to Tim on a quarterly basis where we're at and where he's at with some of the objectives that we have in his review. And I think it's important for Tim to get feedback quarterly from the board stating, this is where we see you need to make improvement or this is where we see you're doing well. If we go too long within that period, sometimes you lose that connection. It's been worked out very, very well for us for the last two or three years with him. He knows exactly where we want him to be and we know exactly where he's at. So just want to make sure we're still going to continue to do that.
And it's surely board members that we are. And we're actually doing some of that today. So it is set with Angela to come up quarterly so that we keep doing exactly what Dan said.
I was just actually going to clarify on that point as well is that it's, what we're, the piece that we're able to skip is because he's been highly effective for so many consecutive reviews, we can take out the tool that we're held accountable by the NASB and the state to use. And that's just, you know, becomes kind of a benefit to him to not have to do that. But yes, absolutely, we'll still like technically review him.
Any other discussion? Yes?
Do we have a format in place then for the quarterly reviews? I'm still really with all this. Is that what we're talking about, quarterly reviews, right? And it's just a simpler tool so we can keep it?
And you'll experience that later, later in this meeting.
Oh, more of a discussion. Not as that the tool. Okay. Not that victory finder that we were, that we took that class on. Not that.
Oh, that, oh, that, it's coming from the committee.
Yeah, right. Okay. Thanks.
Anything else? So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I don't think we made a motion. Who did? Who made the motion?
Heather.
I think we did. Oh, I apologize.
Heather made the motion and Chad.
Yes, you're right. I got you.
Second item under five is a superintendent contract. Our committee, thank you very much for working so hard on that. And in your packet, you have two documents. The rationale and also the contract itself. So let's put the motion on the table and we can go on from there. Please, Heather.
Move to approve the new superintendent contract as recommended by the Superintendent Contract Subcommittee.
Is there support? Mary, support? Now discussion.
Do you have any questions?
No discussion. Go ahead.
I'm wondering if the committee, I've read through some of the information and wondering if the committee would want to discuss some of the findings, some of the points of that, would this be an appropriate time to put it out?
Yeah.
To the community. So because I'd love to hear the highlights about, and share with the community the highlights of what the decisions have remained.
Anyone from the committee want to speak to any of the items in particular?
Yeah, sure. So I think the first thing that I would call out is that we've added a year to Tim's contract. It will conclude in December of 2022, right? And then in there, let me make sure I, yeah. Okay. So, right, so we extended to 2022. So the previous contract ran July through June. We've moved, we shifted that, right? So it's January through December now, right? So that...
Well, the current contract is in right now, actually goes to December 31st, 2021. So, yeah. So the last revision we made before this took us out of that. Took us more to a calendar year as opposed to a school year. And so this is an extension onto that going into December 2022.
Okay.
So the next, the next item is compensation. And we applied 4% salary increase here over year. And the reason we did that is because it keeps, it keeps right in lockstep with the teacher's contract that was ratified not too long ago.
Yes.
And then we adjusted sick day payout. So, but, so this was another, this was also, this was another item we did to bring it more in line with what the teacher's contract was saying. So what we're allowing, or, right, so what we're allowing is for Tim to basically sell back vacation days, a certain number of vacation days at the end of each year.
So those are main three?
Those are the main items, right?
Right?
Yes.
Salary increase, 4%. We've extended it a year, right? And then looking at the fact that he may be looking at retiring at that time, what do we do with accrued sick days?
Right.
And so I gotta tell you guys, I think you did a great job. And I appreciate the rationale. It was almost as if I was in the meeting with you guys and then they look, okay, I get the logic. I see it. So thank you for that. I hope that gets repeated in future subcommittees. Yes, Eric?
One, one second, I'll note that.
Thank you.
Off speaker, anyway. You guys can correct me if I'm wrong. The last year, that increase was not put in. We don't know what the teacher will be getting that year.
You're correct.
And why do we want to keep the teacher? So that was left open for discussion when that comes. So, you know, so in the fourth year, we'll have to come back and decide what action.
Yeah. I think our verbiage said something like, it wouldn't be less than the last, you know, the last year of the contract. But we, it was unknown. Isn't that how we're divided?
Yeah. So pretty much everything else as far as compensation, we're making the same.
Yes, Dan?
Just wanted to point out, if I'm wrong, because it's your contract, you probably remember the conversation better than I. But the reason we went to December instead of July or end of June timeframe was because if there was ever a point that we said, I'm done, we had that opportunity from December until the next coming school year to find a replacement as opposed to finding somebody or having to be under the, under the gun to hire a superintendent within a one-month period. I think it makes David's job a little harder when you're trying to do that. Gives us some leeway there. Is my memory correct?
Yeah. So it does give the board the option that, let's just say that I am still here all the way up until 2022. In that fall timeframe, all the way up through December, the board could be interviewing and selecting a new superintendent to take over January 1st. The board could also elect that, starting January 1st, they go into that, that period of time and do their selection process and could either have the new superintendent take over immediately or wait until July 1st. The board would have that preference. I think, I think the other big thing that it does is that it aligns the contract with my evaluation. So sometimes it can get a little funky in that you're evaluated January through December, but then you wait until six months later for whatever changes you want to take place to go into effect. And that's impacted most of the time when you have new boards of education. Well, new boards come on in January, they don't come on in July. And so you want your board in January, who's done the evaluation in December, to invoke those new contractual items at the start of that next annual cycle. I'll say it that way. So it just, it more aligns everything out. I'll just, I'll say it that way.
Any other discussion? Yes?
I just wanted to thank Eric and Chad. So they were just fantastic to work with and they're both engineers. So they're like, you know, they had graphs and, you know, all kinds. I mean, they, you know, they just had stuff on the board and, you know, they were... But it was really, it was, they brought a lot to the table. And I really, it took a lot, it takes a lot of time to do all of this. And they really brought a lot of information prior to so that we were able to digest that information and have a more effective meeting. And it was really, it was, I think we worked well together. It was, I really appreciate them doing that.
Thank you. I mean, it's a great job.
And I just, I think it's important because, you know, we're talking like, oh, please, 2022, Tim has gone, this is not what this is all about. It's really about the conversation, making sure that we have our ducks in the row so that we have flexibility from a district's perspective. I just want our, our staff, who we've done, you've done an excellent job of aligning your contract with their raises and if they don't get a raise, freeze. I want them to be rest assured that this isn't the board saying, well, 2022, Tim, you're out. It's not what this is about. This is something that we, we have to do. And we choose to do it in a public forum rather than a different way that we could do it. We could just keep it in a closed session, but that's just not how we want to do it.
Yes, one more's comment. I think that the activity that we just went through, I think it demonstrates not just our commitment to you, Tim, but your commitment to the district, that we can sit down and have a good conversation and come up with an extended contract. So I appreciate it. Heather, I echo your words. I appreciate the, the back and forth camaraderie that it took to put that together. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. Are we ready to vote? We do have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Is there anything that needs to be said about the school district safety liaison before we make the motion? Does somebody want to talk about that for a second?
I don't know, Dave or Sam, if you want to throw anything in there. Basically, this is some fairly new legislation that came into play. I'll just say it this way. I don't think the state has everything in place that they thought they would have in place. But at the end of the day, they're, they wanted to mandate that every district appoint a, a single person as the school safety liaison and just have that noted. There will be some additional follow-up things that come. There's a resolution that we'll be bringing before you. But quite honestly, I'm trying to say this in a nice way. I think maybe the state had just sort of gotten ahead of itself in a couple of areas. And so, so we're, we want to meet the letter of the law, but we don't want to do anything more right now because we think some, some things are going to change and that kind of thing. And so I don't think I want to say anything else.
All right. Very good. Would someone like to make the motion? Dan?
Move to appoint Sam Barnard as Assistant Superintendent of Business as Oxford Community Schools Safety Liaison as required by Public Act 435, MCL 28.681, MCL 28.683, Public Act 548, Public Act 549,
Is there support? Mary, support? Any additional discussion? Yes, sir?
Is there any training that needs to go with this new role?
Not at this point, but I wouldn't say that there will not be follow-up requirements and other things that we have to do.
Once the state figures it out. Okay. Dan?
Sorry, Sam, we have to ask this question. Is there any financial application over and above what Sam currently is at? Currently? I mean, are we paying Sam more to be this?
No.
Okay. And could that change if the state changes their mind?
I don't view this, this requirement as something that is time-intensive or that it's not necessarily doing anything that we're not already doing. It's more of a designation. Is that fair to say?
Yeah. I mean, there's going to be some, you know, it's hard to speculate because the state has an extended time period to create the Safety Commission. So it doesn't even exist yet. So we don't even have a place to report our safety liaison to. It hasn't been created. But, you know, there will be certain, certain expectations about meeting, meeting with the state police regarding construction things. You know, all things that are in some ways, you know, current practice, but I think more formalized in terms of expectations.
So let me rephrase my question.
Okay.
So there's no anticipation from the state to come and say, you're going to create this new position and there's going to be an extra... We take it off of Sam, we put it somewhere else and they say, you have this new position and it's going to cost you X amount of dollars.
Okay. I see it that way.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Curriculum instruction, Mr. Weaver, you've never looked any better.
I just needed to say that since the beginning of this meeting.
Nothing.
But I see nothing under his, thank you. But thank you for being, you're in his place.
She can come all the time now. That was the shortest presentation.
That's true. You just hit the record right there, David. Finance and operations, Mr. Barnard?
Good evening. I have just a few items on the agenda. Most of them are from the last meeting. The fire alarm system is A. Recommendation for action.
So let's see, put a motion on the table? Yes, Dan?
Move to approve the purchase of the fire alarm system for 162 and 176 South Washington Street, Oxford, from Johnson Controls at a cost of $27,141.
And is there support for this motion? Eric, support? Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And then the next item is B, the furniture bid package. That was discussed at the last board meeting. We have a motion for action as well.
Please. Move to approve the purchase of the furniture package for the Oba Expansion at 162 South Washington Street, Oxford, from interior environments at a cost of $90,719.18.
And is there support? Chad, support? Discussion? Yes, sir.
So there will be no furniture required for 176?
I believe this is mostly all for the new space, 162. Tony, is there anything that's allocated? No. It's all, it's all new.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Great question.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The last item on the agenda is just simply informational. I included the overall budget that we see as of this moment in terms of the Oba Expansion. Obviously, the general contractor that we had the board approve over a month ago, as well as, again, the furniture and fire protection. and all the other items that, some of which are estimates. So I just wanted to bring that forward and obviously be extremely transparent with what we foresee as a potential total cost for this OVA expansion.
Board members, do you have anything? Thank you for that. It looks like just under a half a million dollar project.
Thank you.
All right. Human resources?
Yes, just a quick update for the Board. I know we've got a few new members on the Board, but back in the fall, if you recall, the Michigan Department of Education Office of Career and Technical Education had selected Oxford, among other districts, for a office of civil rights audit. And so they came on site, did a tour of the high school and our administrative facilities. They were supposed to give a report back to us in December, but they were very delayed in giving us that information. So we did finally receive that report just a couple of weeks ago. And so I wanted to share that information with the Board. I don't know if you've had a chance to look through it, but this was just their initial findings. And overall, just to put it in perspective, it was really good. You know, in terms of, you know, what some of those findings could have been. And coming back, a lot of them were pretty simple things, from paper towel holders being too high or soap dispensers at the wrong height or having wheelchair accessible sinks that had pipe coverings underneath. So a lot of very simple things. So I wanted the Board to at least have the information that we've received from this report. Our plan is, we, in April, Mr. Barnum, Mr. Sarkins, myself and Mr. Bus from the high school, we were going to do a walkthrough at the high school of all of the findings, put together a plan that we'll bring back to the Board in early May for your approval. So at that time, we anticipate we'll go through this in finer detail, what those findings were and what the district plan is to address each of those.
Any comments or questions? I just have one. What is their expected time? What do they expect our response to be?
So we have to put, we have to submit a plan. That was originally, I believe it was supposed to be in February, but that's now, that's not delayed. So we plan to submit that plan by the end of the year. Initially, we have until, I believe, next December, but we can always extend that deadline. So the work doesn't have to be completed in December. We can continue to keep that case open if there are any longstanding issues that need to be addressed. One of them, if you look through, I should probably point out, was the parking lot. Just accessibility, a number of spots. They did not actually audit the parking lot because that's going to be renovated this summer. So we just said, so we knew they were going to cite us for the parking lot knowing that it was going to be completely redone and up to current standards.
Okay, all right, good, good, good. And will they come back and re-audit to show closure?
We don't anticipate. So what we would do is submit pictures and narrative of the plan that those things have been accomplished, but we don't expect that the state's going to have time to come back.
Similarly, like we would do an OSHA audit. We would send pictures and proofs that we did the fixes.
Right, right.
Okay, all right. Yes?
Do you anticipate that your plan will include cost estimates?
Yes, yes, we can absolutely do that. Yep, we will have that. And we expect that most of it is going to be very nominal, but...
The look like it.
Yeah, yeah. But we will certainly do that. I'll work with Mr. Barnum, Mr. Sarkins to put together an idea of what those costs will be.
Okay, thanks, Eric. Anything else? Thank you for that update. Student services? You switched over. Keep it jumping.
We're busy enrolling. I'm rolling for the fall. It's kindergarten registration right now. Yeah.
All right. Angela, any unscheduled audience participation?
No.
All right. We have a scheduled activities calendar. Please look that over. Any clarification, sir? That you can think of? Yes?
I just, I'm amazed. It just seems like it's years gone by really quick. I'm looking at Bridges commencement already. It's that time. Get ready. It's pretty crazy, isn't it? It is.
All right, no clarifications. Final board comments. Mary, would you like to begin?
Sure, sure, I'll begin. It's really nice to come on to the Board at this really great time and give out things they've contributed and get wonderful reviews. And we get to, at the end of last year, have contracts signed by all of our staff. I love that. So thank you, Tim, for all the work. Thank you too. And Angela, for all the work that you do behind the scenes to make sure stuff gets done. I was just, I read through this civil rights report before and I think it's really great that we just have the small things to fix. And I just want to make a personal point that sometimes things like this can look like, "Oh, they're nitpicking and it's the state and they're just trying to make it difficult for us." But these things really are important and I think it's important that we do take care of them as soon as we can because for people who can't reach the paper towel holders, who can't reach the lock, it's really important that we can offer them a building that they can use. You know, we have all these great programs, like, it's just all the different programs in the district and we need to make sure that they're also physically accessible for folks. So I'm glad we're doing a really good job with that and grateful it's just a few things to get done. So that's really, that's really awesome. I'll just give a little shout out for the robotics team, 2137. Tor competed in Belleville this last weekend where they won the chairman's award. The robot did well too. But we won the chairman's award, which is an overall team award for the work that they do in the community, building relationships in the community like we're talking about as well as taking the message of STEM to places in the community and outside of our community. So great job.
Great job, great job. Thank you. Chad?
I guess just go back to the contract again for a second. David and Tim, I wanted to thank you guys for the work you did offline, helping us do some research and putting together numerous drafts so we could see what the changes looked like. So I appreciate that. It was a great experience working with you. And one note, an event that is not on this list is March 20th through the 22nd, our HOSA kids are going to their state competition in Grand One. So good luck to them and I believe Daca is heading up to the state as well. And then finally, Emily and Caitlin, they're not here, but I love, I love an event like Oxford Gives Back because it's an opportunity for the students to recognize the support that the community gives to them and to the schools. Obviously, without the community as a whole, we really wouldn't be in the position that we are. So I, having been a part of community outreach, this type of program, it's, it is exactly what I love to see. And I love that the kids are excited about, passionate about doing that kind of work. So.
Chad, thank you. Eric?
Yeah, I wish they were still here because they're pretty impressive girls, very impressive young ladies that, God, all this is wonderful, but what I, my key takeaway from listening to them talk was, they know their stuff. I mean, these young ladies knew what they're talking about. They're great subject matter experts. They're reaching out to the principals and teachers and they had it down. So I was thinking, I would hire any of those girls in a second. They're fantastic. And just back to the contract discussions, I think we went into it, you know, together, kind of realizing that, plainly speaking, that we have an overachiever here. What are we going to do to keep them? So that was kind of what we started is, you know, your contract is running out. I think we want to, we'd like it, we want to keep you, what's it going to take? And the discussion just kind of started going from there. And I'm glad we're able to come to a reasonable agreement and I think it's going to be a good, successful four years. So, thanks for sticking in.
Thank you, Eric. Heather?
I echo that. Obviously, you know, we put a lot of time in and Dave helped out a lot too. I felt like I left you out earlier, but I didn't want to leave him out. So he was a great resource of information for our contract, just the contractual part of our job. This is a big part of our job as a Board, is to employ him and to, you know, retain him, have a contract and do all that. So it's a big piece of what our function is as a Board. So Dave was really helpful in that too. So, yep, and the girls were great. I feel the same way, Eric. They were, I was just like, wow.
Yeah.
Do they babysit?
Yeah.
They really are sharp girls. I mean, really well-spoken. I mean, well-spoken, well-spoken.
Very good. Yeah.
While negotiation 101, Tim, you really weren't that good.
Believe me, I heard that.
I know, I know. But I just want to, Heather, Eric, and Chad, you know, I purposely stepped away from this portion of it because I thought it was really important for somebody else to look at it, especially newer board members with the guidance of Heather, who's been here a little while, two years now.
Am I like a veteran now?
You're a veteran. You're a vet.
So, and when I started reading the things that we put in place, I was very pleased with the direction that it took, but it also kept in mind where we have always wanted to be with our superintendent. We have a superintendent that knows his craft, but also understands that it's not just all about him. His goals are really reflected upon the success of others. And if there's no success below you, it doesn't matter how good you are at the top. And that's really what we've built here with Tim and what we continue to move forward with. So I was very happy to see it. I know that you all know that Tim's great at his job, but I think you all saw a little bit different side of Tim when you're in there and just how much he is all about teaming home. So, and it came through on the contract. Again, the girls, everybody said the girls were outstanding. We're doing something right. If this is the fourth or fifth year of Oxford Gives Back, right, those girls would have been in middle school when it started. And so you see, when Jacinda started it, she started bringing some of the younger kids in and now they're going even back further than eighth grade. They're going from the middle school area, reaching into the elementary schools. And that just breeds that type of community that... Let's face it, we're just a Board of the school district. The community is really what gives us the ability to do the things that we do. And I think we're really gaining momentum there. We're really gaining a lot of traction. The community sees what we're doing for the community and I think they understand, the majority of people understand that we were very, very appreciative of our community and our students are very appreciative of how they get supported. And no more evident than our past winter... I wish Jordan was here. I sent him a little text. It was an outstanding winter season, not just athletically, but in some of the things that you heard about the way coaches and players interact, the way that families interact with other schools, other parents, the coaching staffs, their student athletes. It's very good to hear that, I don't, and I'm sure Mr. Wolf can tell us, there's probably been a little bit of hiccups here and there along the way, but no outstanding things. We had miles of people coming to visit us. And from a Board member's perspective, I thank Jordan for doing a very good job of making sure that concerns were addressed and they're addressed appropriately. And when they have further questions, they go to the proper channel. So I just love it when people compete. I didn't get to as many basketball games as I would have liked to, but boy, what a great season, what a great story. The cheerleaders did a phenomenal job this year. I know it's not an MHSAA sport, but robotics is having a tremendous season. Skiing had a good turnout. Wrestling, phenomenal. Bowling, they had a state championship, an individual state championship. Just phenomenal things that our kids are doing. And when you really take a look back at it as a Board member, it's... We put plans together, the cabinet puts things together so they have opportunities to do things like that. And when it comes full circle, you see the success not only on the playing field, but as young men and women, that's really what matters. So please let Jordan know again that I'm proud of our student athletes and I'm sure we'll see them here pretty soon.
Very good. Walk out of the chat. You guys, I think you did it all really well. So, Mr. Trump?
Just let the girls know I've already signed up. So I'm on one of the houses and I'm looking forward to it. And obviously, I appreciate the Board's support, not only in the contract, but just on an ongoing basis. I think I'll, maybe I'll just share this with the entire Board and that the first meeting that I met with the subcommittee, I said, "I just want you to know, this is not how I normally negotiate on behalf of the district." And I basically, I just, I put my cards on the table and just said, "Yeah, you know, I want to stay here in Oxford." And so it was a really good experience for myself as well and I appreciate all the time that the subcommittee put into meeting with me and coming to a mutually agreeable contract. So I'm just very appreciative. That's it.
All right, item 14. Dan?
Move to meet in closed session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, Section 8A, to consider a periodic personnel evaluation of a staff member if the named person requests a closed hearing.
We go roll call, vote? We need support. We need support first. All right, Mary, support? Now roll call, vote. Eric? Yay, your name?
Oh, yay.
Heather?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
I'm a yes. So we are now officially going into closed session. About a three or four minute break. We'll come back, so about five minutes. OCTV.